Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
John.
Here.
And Nate's excused. Need a motion for consent agenda.
I motion to consent agenda.
A motion by Sarah, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Travis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's time for public input, this is the time and place for discussion, items not already on the agenda. Anybody? Presentation from Callahan Municipal Consultants LLC regarding city administrative hire. To you.
So John and I met with Pat yesterday morning and went over some things and so now he's just going to share with everybody.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well thanks for having me here, just by way of introduction, I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself and then I'm going to follow this orange sheet that you see in front of you. I was born in Waze, not too far from here, Cascade. I always tell people when I'm in Cascade, I always say to them, there's probably somebody much more famous than me that you know from Cascade and he was a class behind me in high school. And they want to guess his name?
Brad something.
No, Gary Donald.
Well, somebody's in the Facebook.
If you're close enough, you folks are all Hawkeyes, right?
There's a Facebook Hall of Fame guy from Cascade.
No, we're not Hawkeyes.
You're not all Hawkeyes, no. I thought you'd be all Hawkeyes, just supposed to have a city, but anyway. Born in Waze, dairy, short horned beef farm operation under Cascade, high school Cascade, then on Lawrence College and University of Iowa and then started a career in city government. And my first job, right out of graduate school, was Fort Madison Iowa, where I worked in public transportation. Did that for three years, then went to West Point where I was the administrator, the first one that they ever had. And then I got a chance to come back closer to home on Makoka's job. And at the young age, 28-years-old, got to Makoka City Manager job and was there 15-years. Went into consulting, then went back to being a city administrator and went to Anamosa when I was city administrator. And that was my last city administrative job and then went back into consulting. And I always tell people, what are the two towns that I started in and ended in have in common? Started in Fort Madison and I ended in Anamosa. I don't know how it ended up that way, but it didn't. I've had tours of both of them, I've never spent a day in one of them, but I've had tours of both of them and I'm firm believer, every high school senior should have a tour of maximum security. I think it would be quite interesting for those folks, but anyway, that's a whole other story. I do consulting all over the state of Iowa. The primary thing I do is I help cities recruit and hire city administrators, but I do other things too, like do capital improvements plan. In fact, I was on the phone today with a little town people and I'm going to help them do a capital improvements plan. I also do goal setting. I actually did that years ago when I was working at the Institute of Public Affairs with Tim Shields. And if you remember Tim, but Tim basically was active in the Institute of Public Affairs for many years, taught me how to do goal setting and then I did it at that time and I still do about, oh, eight or 10 a year, so. But I'm here tonight to basically talk about two things. One is the search process because as we all know, your current city administrator, last day is June 30th and you folks have to hire a new city administrator. And obviously, you've gotten my proposal and it's my understanding you've approved that proposal, I think in April, right? Okay. And I've got other searches I've been doing and I'm patiently waiting for someone from Lisbon to call me and say, let's move ahead, let's go. And Stephanie called me here about a week or so ago and said, we're ready to move forward. So that's when we set up a meeting yesterday and then we were looking ahead to Monday as well, so. Now, when I do searches, one of the very first things I do is I kind of get the lay of the land. I want to come in and get a good feel for the community, employees, the city council, all your department heads. And usually the way I do that is I have private one-on-one meetings with all the council members and the mayor and all your department heads. And then if there's any other key individual that would be important for me to talk to. In this case, the 19-year city attorney Mark, could be someone I might want to visit with. I used to do that face-to-face, but the last two or three I've done because of the coronavirus, I've done it over the phone. And so, if we ever get past the coronavirus, I might go back to doing it face-to-face, but I do them over the phone. And the reason I do that is I want to find out everything I know that I can about the community so that I'm prepared to answer the questions of potential candidates. I tell people when I do these searches that I will not sugarcoat, I will not tell you any lies about any candidates. You will hear exactly everything I have heard about the candidates and everything I know about those candidates. But on the other side of the equation, I will not lie to a candidate either. I will tell them exactly what they would encounter if they were to accept the position of city administrator in a particular county. And I tell people, the reason I am so blunt and upfront with both you and them is that I don't want six months or a year from now where someone would say to me, boy, if I'd have known that, I'd have never taken that job. Or if I'd have known that, you know, I'd have never hired that person. So I try to be as upfront as I can with the candidates. Every once in a while, there's something that kind of gets past me that I don't know about and, you know, I hear about it later and hopefully it's not, you know, an important factor for any, either the candidate or the city. But for the most part, I get a pretty good feel for the community and I get a pretty good feel for the candidates, so I try to be upfront and honest with them all as, as I can. Now, one of the interesting things about, about your, your situation here is that we all know that this position is going to be open June 30th. If not already, the position will soon be vacant. Now, kind of the interesting thing about that is when I first got the call from Connie, she said, I'm going to basically retire or leave the position the end of the year. Then I get another call saying, no, I'm moving that up to June 30th. And of course, when I hear that, it's like red flags go up. I'm like, okay, what's this all about? Why this sudden switching gears here? And, and I really didn't know much more than that until I met with the personnel committee on, yesterday. And they did learn that you're seeking applicants for the city court position, which is good. And one of the things that Connie shared with me is that you kind, she was kind of wearing a lot of hats. And I'd have been a little bit overwhelming at times because she kind of had almost two positions that she was doing and. And like I would tell you, having worked with council candidates and city administrators and myself, sometimes if you try to take on too much like that, you will burn yourself out. And so I was a little bit concerned if, if some of that was taking place. The other thing I picked up on though, yesterday, was that your personnel committee was meeting one-on-one with employees. That doesn't happen too often where that's, that kind of conversations going on, so that piqued my interest. And of course, I watched the news and I saw the story in KCRG about your police chief situation, so that has got me interested as well. And then I researched for minutes and looked at that. And then the other thing I want to share with you about the search process, I'm under number two here, obviously, if you haven't, if you've been following along, and that is the, the whole arena for recruiting and hiring city administrators over the last, I'd say, two to three years has changed dramatically. We have basically gone to what I call a candidate's market now. Eventually, I'm going to get to this blue sheet, but we've had a record number of openings for city administrator positions in Iowa the last three years. We had 29 openings in 2016 and we had 26 openings in 2017. We had 27 openings in 2018 and we had 21 to 22 openings in 2019. Because that, five or 10 or 20 years ago was unheard of. We, you never, when I was a young man in my 30s in Iowa looking to move up, if we had five or six, six openings a year, we were absolutely thrilled. It's unbelievable how many openings we've been having in recent years. And even already this year, in 2020, I think we're up to about eight or 10 already and we're not even at the halfway point. I can usually tell, you know, what's going on out there by a ton of times my phone rings. Like, I just got a call last week from Albona. Their city administrator has been asked to leave and as a result, they have an opening right now too. And so, and I'm working with, in McClair, their city administrator is going to retire, so I'm doing that. I just finished up a search in, in Riverdale, just finished up a search in Healy and I used to do three or four days a year and now I'm turning them away because I'm doing five, six, seven, eight a year. I can't do them all. I do have two people that I came up with that helped me on days, but this is the busiest I've ever been since I started, started in the search business, so. The other thing that, as you all know, has come on the scene, that's impacted all of our lives, but it's also impacting the search process, and that is the coronavirus. And you might say, well, why is that impacting it? Well, two reasons, one is it makes the interview process a little more challenging, you know, because first of all, you've got to do that social distancing, which, I had interviews this past week and we maintained social distancing as best we could. Some of us wore masks and hit out of the building and that sort of thing. But the other thing that you might not think about is it's impacting the number of candidates for the job. And here's what's going on, I have a candidate in Healy who was really excited about the job and I felt was an excellent candidate for the job and had recruited him from another one and I thought he would be a really good match. He agreed to be interviewed, he had, he had made all the cuts, he had made the first cut, second cut, he was a finalist for the job. And about three days before the interview, he calls me and says, I'm pulling out. I'm, I'm not going to come to the interview. I, I, I'm not going to take this job if you offer it to me. And I says, well, what has changed? Because you were so enthused a week or two ago. And he said, I'm still very enthused, I want this job, but my spouse has told me with the coronavirus and everything, we're not moving. She said, I am not selling this house and all that goes with that, I'm not buying another house and all the interaction goes with that and I'm not moving to another city and finding a new doctor, a new dentist, a new school and all of that that goes with it. And unfortunately, he pulled out even though he wanted the job. He said, really, what kind of can I use this, this new job or divorce? He said, that was my two choices. And so, we're apt to see more of that kind of thing where people are saying, until this settles down, I'm not sure if I want to move, which then has a very negative impact on our potential pool of candidates. The other thing that I think is going to impact us is the social unrest going on right now. And once again, you might say, well, why should that have an impact? Well, you've got to keep in mind, when a person makes a decision to find another job, there's a number of changes and challenges that take place now. All of a sudden, it's you got a new job and your spouse might have a new job and you got to sell a house and you got to buy a new house and new schools and that's a lot of change in a short period of time. And I've learned over the years that when, there's a lot of unknowns floating out there in the world and a lot of things that just, hey, we don't know how this is all going to play out, we've got an election this year. When there's so many unknowns, people tend to pull back and just kind of hunker down and say, we ain't going anywhere. We're sitting tight here for a while, folks. And that's going to impact, I think, your potential member of candidates for this position. So, that then brought us to the discussion yesterday about, okay, when should we start this? And I'm ready to go, I can start this process tomorrow because I just finished up a search process just this past week and I'm ready to hit the ground running. But this may not be the time. And here's why. You might want to seriously take a look at looking, having an interim city administrator because of the fact that you, you know, you're going to have this position vacant. And one of the worst things you can do in recruiting candidates is have this position vacant and then potential candidates not being able to talk to the person who was in that chair. Or the question is, why did they leave so abruptly, you know? So that raises some questions. So whenever you need an interim city administrator, I start saying, okay, there's a number of options. Is there any in-house candidates for that job? Is there anyone on the payroll right now that could be appointed to city administrator? And that does happen quite often. I mentioned to you that the folks in Albona contacted me last week. They have an internal person who is going to be their interim city administrator. And I think he's very capable, he's very young, he's never been a city administrator before, but I think he has the capability of stepping up and assuming that role. I don't know if there's anyone here that would have the interest or the capability of assuming the role of interim city administrator. Your number of employees is much less than Albona, so the potential for finding that person is probably less likely here than in larger cities. The other thing that comes into mind is occasionally, elect officials will step up and say, I will serve as your interim city administrator. My last search in Riverdale, the mayor stepped up to the plate and said, hey, we're not without a city administrator here and we need to go through the search. I will be the city administrator until we find a new one. And of course, now we've found a new one, he's going to turn the reins over to his newly-appointed city administrator here in a couple of weeks. Now, I understand that your mayor has taken a leave and so therefore, that's probably not an option here. The only other option I can think of, is there any member of the council that is in a situation where they could be the city administrator? And so, if the answer to these first two options is no, then the next option is, is there an outside candidate? Someone that you can reach out to that will be willing to come aboard and, and be your interim city administrator for whatever period of time you think would be appropriate? So, the other option, which I wouldn't recommend, and then just going without naming anyone as your interim city administrator. And what that leads to is what I call avoid in leadership. And things start to, you know, drift and that makes your community even less appealing to potential candidates because they will ask me, who's in charge now that the previous administrator is gone? And if I can't come back and say, this person is in charge, they're making sure that nothing falls through the cracks. There's this red flag that goes up and says, whoa, so you're telling me that I'm going to commit and inherit a real mess? That's what you're telling me, huh? And I would obviously say, I don't know, because, you know, they don't have an interim city administrator, it's just kind of, who knows what's going on? And so, I can tell you right now, that is not an option I would recommend, is to do that. My recommendation is, is that there's no internal candidates and if none of you want it, that you do reach out to the outside world and, and see if you can find an interim candidate. I actually only know of one person right now that would be interested in that role now. Does that mean there's no one else out there? I don't know. All I know is I have a pretty good feel for who's looking and who's available and that sort of thing because I constantly have people contacting me saying, if there's ever an opening for an interim administrator, I would be interested. Well, I got three guys like that in Des Moines that want to do it, but they want to do it in the Des Moines metro area. They don't want to have to drive two, two hours to get to the job area and they want someone close in that metro Des Moines area. So, if you were there, I would say, hey, I got, I got a choice of three people here for you folks. In this area here, what I would call a kind of a Cedar Rapids Iowa city metro area, I only know of one person that might be interested to be your interim. And so, and that's why I said to the committee yesterday, in fact, we reached out to that person and called them and said, would you like to be at our meeting tonight and at least introduce yourself to the council and see if it's an option that they want to pursue, so. My suggestion to you, that you would be seriously look at naming an interim and maybe even consider the possibility of delaying the search. And, and here's why. My personal opinion is, the current timing of doing this search is not ideal by any means, for internal and external reasons. The external reasons are obvious, the coronavirus and the social unrest and lack of just good candidates right now. The internal reasons are what I call all the red flags, okay? And you probably know some of those red flags. As I told you, when a candidate asks me about a job, I lay it all out for them. I, everything I'm aware of, I lay it out for them so they're, so they can come in knowing what the situation is so they can make an informed decision. As someone from the outside looking in, and I knew very little about you, I, I've done some work here years ago, but it's many, many years since I had done anything here in Lisbon and John probably remembers me from, I can't remember now what we did, John. I thought it was a capital bruise, I thought it was a capital bruise, why we did many years ago, so. And so, as I look at your options, you know, one option would be, okay, we charge ahead with the search and because the position was empty, we put it on the fast track. And that's kind of what I did in Riverdale. I actually did a search there in less than 60-days, which is the fastest search I've ever done. And I tell you, a lot has to fall into place and it's got to be bing, 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 right in a row for that to happen in 60-days or less. Basically, you'd have to place the ads tomorrow, I'd have to have clear direction from you tonight, what you're looking for, and we'd have to come up with a good timeline tonight for something like that to happen. And if that's what you're, if that's what your desire is, that's what this yellow sheet is all about. Because if you tell me, that's the option you want to go, full speed ahead on the search, I can do it. The other option would be, is what I call my, my typical normal search process, and that's the one that I basically laid out in my proposal for you. And that's the one that showed me starting in April, which of course didn't happen, okay? And, and then continuing through the summer, you know, and then we wrap it up towards the end of the summer. And obviously, I have to redo that schedule because we're a long ways past April when that proposal was given to you, so. But my typical process takes about 90-days or so from beginning to end, a little longer than I'm sure. Now, I'm going to give you one example of another community that I thought, as I look back, you know, I've done this, this things, but I ended up 46 searches over here, but. As I look back, every once in a while, I run across a city and this happened twice, where I came into the community and I said, you're not ready for this. This is not the time to do a search. And as I left here yesterday and I started thinking about it, my mind went back to Tipton, Iowa, about, about three years ago. And you may recall, in Tipton, your neighbor Wes, Chris, was the city manager in Tipton. Mount Vernon stole him, put him over there, Tipton had no city administrator. Tipton had some, some, some controversy in the community. There was, there was a group of citizens that were really making life extremely difficult for city employees at the time. There were some issues brewing in the police department. There was, there was a number of things going on, employee morale was not the best. And as a result, I started the search process and after my one-on-one interviews, I thought, how am I going to market this city to potential candidates? How am I going to make this a good, exciting position for someone? And I had been enthused and I couldn't. So I went back to the council and I said, timeout, let's just step back here a moment. Let's bring in an interim and let's get your house back in order. Let's make this job appealing to potential candidates so I can go out and find you good candidates for this position, rather than pursuing candidates that may be, may be in transition. Or maybe, for whatever reason, not working right now and they'll take any job that comes along, you know? And there's candidates like that, I can give you four or five of them right now, but they're not in Iowa right now, but from around the country that they'll take it because they don't have a job right now. No job is, you know, this job is better than no job, so.
So, Pat, I didn't mean to cut you off, but is that what you're recommending for this council?
That's what I'm getting to, yes. And, and we'll get to that options and that's the next thing here. I think Tipton is a perfect example. We did not do that search, we put it off for a year. A guy named Tim Long came in and goes to the interim and put things kind of back in order. He was a retired city administrator, he did a great job. That made that community much more appealing. And then that, when we did go out, we found a number of very, very good candidates. They spoke to Tim and Tim said, hey, I think we've turned around here. I think we've got our house back in order, a great community. And, and he was then replaced by Brian Leiner and Brian's still there and doing a good job for them. That would be what I would recommend here. I really think you're in a position where I may not be able to recruit good candidates for you. So here's what I see as some options. You could do a 90-day delay, you know, and we could do the search in fall. You could do what I, you know, 160-days to get delayed and we would do the search in the wintertime, which is, the problem with the wintertime search is that you get into holidays and then you get into bad weather. Not that it can't be done, but it's more challenging. I, I'll give you one example, I did one in January this year and the day of the interviews, we had a snowstorm. I couldn't get there. Now, the candidate was coming from a different direction, he got there and they want to have it out me. And so I was doing it remotely by Zoom and so that's the challenging thing about winter. Is the candidate, you, you can make it, you know, if nothing else, the snowplow swings by and picks you up and brings you here. My day here probably would not be as big an issue with, with this city because I'm only 20-minutes away, I'm in Anamosa, so. You could send a snowplow to get me if you have to, but getting the candidates here is another story, so, but keep that in mind. The other option is to, you know, maybe put it out about, oh, nine, 10, 12 months, you know, depending on how things are going, so. I will, I will do whatever you want. You're the boss, you're in charge and you tell me what you want me to do. But my suggestion would be to do a delay. The length, that's up to you. I would say at least 180-days, maybe longer and, and we go forward after that. After that period of time where I would hope that we can have a good city, interim city administrator place that kind of, kind of settles things down a little bit and maybe kind of gets you back to a position where I think it'll be a very attractive community, because you've got a great location. One of the things I run into dealing with finding good candidates is, is there a good number of opportunities for a spouse to work? And those cities like the Bluefields of Iowa, or the, yeah, the Bluefields or the Riverdows, they're, they struggle because they, they're not close to a metro area where there's employment opportunities for a spouse. And so, you, on the other hand, are very close to the Cedar Rapids metro area where there's lots of opportunities for a spouse to find a job and so that's a real plus for you, so. I'm going to take a pause there, but I am going to just kind of tell you a little bit about what we briefly talked about yesterday with the personnel meeting and that's the yellow sheet. And the yellow sheet is just an overview of the search process. When I do a search process, one of the first things I always tell people is, we, we need to look at the basics before we start. Your job description, what you're working on, your ordinance, you make sure there's no change, if there's changes to the ordinance you need to make. Update your goals and objectives, and I know you did a goals and objectives, but it's three-years-old. And I'm not sure how many of you were on the council when that was done, but that might need to be updated. And then we need to work on developing a position profile or what I call my marketing tool to, to promote the position. And if we're going to do the interim, we need to do that fairly quickly so that they're on, onboard by July 1st. We need to, once you tell me as a council, when you want to do the search, if it's right away, like I said, I can do it. You need to really start working on the timetable, if it's going to be a little later, I'll put together a revised timetable to fit what you tell me that you want me to do. The other thing we'll need to talk about is my one-on-one interviews with all of you so I can get a big, big picture here. Whether or not you want to be citizen involved in the process. A lot of, most councils usually do this process on their own without reaching out and exciting up any kind of a citizens committee. I would say 90% of the cities that I work with, that's the way they do it, but there are a few cities out there that use citizens committees as well. Once again, that's, that's your call that we have to make some point down the road. If we're going to do a community, a position profile, which I gave Stephanie an example of what one looks like. If we're going to do this on the fast track, then I'm probably going to skip that and just put together a packet for potential candidates and skip the position profile. Stephanie, you might, if you've got those two examples, you might pass them around so they can see what they look like. Just, a position profile has a lot of nice pictures in it, a lot of good information, it markets the city and the job and, and the community. Whereas the, whereas the packet, that just has the basics, job description, ordinance, list of goals and objectives, a map, and we're good to go. So it's very limited and so. The profile, as I tell people, looks pretty. We got some nice pictures, got a lot of good information about the community. And the reason I use that is I want the candidate and the spouse to get excited about the job. So, and once again, we, we would need time to do something like that if you want to do it. The other thing we need to talk about is the salary. If you're going to put this on the fast track, we would need to decide that tonight what salary may be going to go with and also the benefit package. And we'd also have to decide tonight where we're going to advertise. I typically advertise three main areas. The ICMA, or the International City Management Association, which is about $450, $600 for that ad. The ICMA, the International City Administration Association, which is about $450, $600 for that ad on the website. Goes out across the whole nation. Iowa League of Cities, which is free, and the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities website, which is also free. So we need, and there's other options depending on what you tell me you want to do that we can look at. The other thing that we'll talk about tonight if you want to move forward is the confidentiality of the candidates' applications. Most candidates will expect confidentiality right at the start. And occasionally, a city will get to the finalist stage and then release the names. Although the vast majority of the cities I work with do not do that for one simple reason. I've kind of kept track over my 46 searches on how many candidates have told me, if my name is released to the public, I'm going to withdraw. And I would say about 25 to 40% of my candidates over the years have said to me, well, that's all done and good, but if you release my name, no, I'm out. And I share with you two examples, my own personal example. I was a finalist many years ago in Boone, Iowa. Unbeknownst to me, my name was released to the local newspaper without my permission or knowledge. I got a call from the newspaper in Boone saying, hey, I understand you're one of four finalists for a city administrator job. Could you send us a picture? And I said, no, there's no need for you to have a picture because now they only have three candidates because I have promptly withdrawn. Please do not put my name in your local newspaper. And I was done. I have a candidate in Cascade, Iowa, who had worked in city government, pulled out of city government for a few years, worked for a private company, wanted to get back in city government. I said, I have a deputy newspaper who's pushing to release the names. Can I release your name? And she said, no. If you release, I will pull out before I allow you to release my name. I do not want my current employer to know that I'm a finalist for this job. So you can release the names. That's your call. I will do whatever you tell me to do. But I will tell you, you can post or lose candidates if you do that. So it's up to you. The Iowa Supreme Court has ruled that you can maintain that confidentiality if you want to. It's a call that you as a council will make, not me. You as a council will make that call. All I ask is before we release the names, I have the opportunity to go back to the candidate and give them the opportunity to withdraw if that's what they want to do, if they don't want to name you. So, so we need to talk about that fairly early in the process. And then the other thing we need to talk about on the last page there is I will send you numerous emails, keep you posted on what's going on. I like to have one person as kind of my go-to person, my contact person. And until you tell me differently, that's going to be Stephanie, okay? And so normally it's the mayor. He's kind of my go-to person. In Riverdale, where I just got done, I was on the phone today with the mayor three times. So I kind of need that go-to person that I can bounce stuff off and say, okay, what do you do now? So that yellow sheet then is kind of the overview of the process. Some other things I'm not going to spend much, any time on. The pink sheet for your reference is, this is more for a city that's just starting out with a new city administrator position. I just actually wrote this for advocates because they toyed with the idea of a city administrator. I kind of put it on hold for a while. But I always give it to cities who are like kind of at the crossroads because I understand you're going to probably split out the duties now and have a city clerk position, city administrator position. You might just take this pink sheet and say, okay, let's use this as our checklist, you know? Now that we're making this transition, you probably don't need to do number one, but you probably need to look at your ordinance and make sure your ordinance is up to date. You want to make sure your job description is up to date. You want to make sure your budget matches up with what you're doing because the last thing I want to do is to tell the candidate, well, yeah, we've got the salary and everything set, but yeah, we haven't figured out how we're going to pay for you yet. That's a red flag for a candidate if your budget isn't set up to show how everything is being paid for. Obviously, as I mentioned, no matter what, we've got to set a salary range. We've got to talk about what's in the benefit package. Where is the person's office space? Now, if you're going to split this position, are there two offices for the two people that would be in this position? So I think it's important to take that into consideration. As I mentioned, your goals and objectives are, you know, three years old, should they be updated? And on the backside there is, we need to talk about profiling the advertising. So I give this to you as kind of a checklist, okay? The blue sheet, you can take with you and look at it later. But I alluded to it earlier, the candidate's market. Extremely difficult right now to recruit, hire good candidates. These are some of the reasons why it's extremely difficult to find candidates. I'm not going to go through that list. You can read it, but I've alluded to some of the items on the list as to what's going on out there. The white sheet, the timeline, that is the one I gave you in April. Obviously, we can't use that one now, but I want to show you kind of how things progress on a normal scale, you know? Month number one, you know, is gathering information, doing the profile. Month number two is the marketing. Month number three is the actual selection process. So you can kind of see how this all flows. The green sheet is the money. The money, of course, is important to candidates. There's a movie with Tom Cruise in it that says, show me the money. And it comes a point when we have to sit down and tell the candidate, what are we willing to pay? And I am the go-between when it comes to these discussions on salary benefits. I talk to the finalists and say, if you were offered this job, what's it going to take to get you to accept? And with each and every candidate, I make a summary of our discussions. And then when you tell me who your finalist is, I share that summary with you so you know where they're coming from. And then we hopefully can make an offer that the candidate will accept. I just give you the green sheet so you see where the numbers are lately. You can see the first one is the searches I've done recently, what the range was that they advertised, and then what they ended up paying. The second sheet is taken from a survey that I've done. The last sheet is what I call my checklist. I just give you this now to show you that as we get into the final stages of this process, there's a lot of things that need to be done that have to fall into place. Things on your end and things on my end. And so I do a checklist like this for every search so there's no misunderstanding. I'm looking to you to do this and I will promise you I'm going to get these things done. So everybody knows upfront what I'm doing and then what I'm looking to you folks to do. So with that, I'm going to see if anyone has any questions on anything that I just covered with you. And I know I talk fast and I know I've covered a lot.
So if we decided to do a delay and say we chose 180 days and 75 days into it, we find out that it might need to be longer, can we still change that?
You bet.
Okay.
I don't bill you until I actually do something.
Okay.
You will not get an invoice from me until you give me the green light. Sometimes, for example, the one I just got done, I didn't send them any bills. I'm all done and I'm going to send them one bill at the end of the day. One of the nice things about being self-employed, you know, IFRS and social security, I don't have cash flow problems. So I do this because I enjoy doing it and, you know, I've done it for a long time, you know? Unlike other consultants who will come in here and beg you to do this project, I don't care. If you want to just never do the search, you will not offend me, you know?
Pat did say to us, one of the things was if we were to hire an interim and they were great and we wanted to hire them full-time at the end of this, then we wouldn't need to do a search at all. We wouldn't have any output.
You wouldn't incur any cost. You'd save all that money.
All right.
And if you did that, the only thing I'm going to do is bill you for tonight and yesterday and we're done.
And you know, Travis just brought up the 180-day one. I mean, you've got to look at where is July now, so on, I mean, you're going to, five months from now, you're going to be coming into budget too.
Right.
So, I mean, so.
Well, council definitely going to have to have discussion as to where we want to go, like if we're going to do the interim. I guess first of all, are we all on board that we would like to look at the interim route? Is there anybody who wants to do the full search right now?
I mean, I think right now you go with an interim. I mean, we can't, I mean, we need somebody July 1st, you know?
And I did talk to Nate last night and he was on board with the interim.
And I don't, yeah, I don't want to be, I don't want to be without. So that's, you know, I would rather do interim than be without.
That's the last thing we need is be without. Our city still has to run.
You know, obviously, not only do we need to kind of decide what we would like to do interim, but we need to talk to the interim person that we would be interested in because maybe they have a preference, whether it's three months, six months, a year. You know, maybe they have something that they would like to say about that too. And as you all know, Pat did have a recommendation for us and that recommendation was Jeff Horn. Jeff is here tonight to talk to us about that.
As far as when we would start the search process, we don't have to set that date tonight.
Okay.
You can make your decision on the interim, get started there and address the immediate concern. And then maybe a month or two from now, put it on the agenda and say, okay, when would you like to start this process?
Because my goal would be to just do just that. I mean, clean things up. Let's, let's get things back to normal and let's, then we'll, then we'll worry about it. Because I want to get a good, I'm going to want somebody good in here. And if we're not attractive, then we're not going to attract good people.
And you mentioned also, Pat, when it goes through the interview process of maybe having some citizens sit in to do interviews too. Because like right now, we've got a personnel committee, we've got two. Once we put a third council member in there, it becomes an official meeting. I mean, where if you have a committee, you don't have to have an official meeting.
Right.
You know, I mean, is there a lot of towns that do that?
I've only had about three cities over the years that have involved citizens committees. Like I said, vast majority of cities, you as the council, you are the search committee and you make the decision.
And what's your recommendation on that? Can you tell council what your recommendation is?
My recommendation is the council, you are duly elected to make these decisions. And so you make those decisions. The two issues I've run across when certain, when our citizens are involved is, number one, they don't have access to as much information as you do many times because when it comes to the reference report and background tracks that I present, I'm very protective of those and you as the elected officials are the only ones that see those. I'm very protective of those, as people will tell you. And so therefore, they don't get the 100% picture like you do. The second thing, and this has happened to me three times now, where the citizens committee kind of reviews candidates and talks to them and then they make a recommendation. And then the council interviews them and that's not the one they pick. And so now you kind of have this public relations issue where you've asked these citizens to give up a day or two of their lives to be a part of this process and then you don't take their recommendation. And now you've got to go back to, well, I know you like so-and-so, but we like this one better, so we picked that one. And it's like, why'd you waste my time?
Right.
So, and then the third thing you run into is sometimes, and you know your citizen better than I do, sometimes there's a citizen or two out there that's like, I'm not sure that's the one to be on this committee. And the most recent issue I had was in, what was Webster City? I had a staff member call me up and say, oh my God, I've got this citizen and the council wants to, the council member wants to put him on, but he's have to take the names of the candidate and put it on social media. And now you've breached confidentiality and I can't trust you. Now what do I do? Do I go to the candidates and give them a chance to pull out because I got this one citizen that's notorious for putting everything out on social media? Yeah, I probably do. Give them a chance to withdraw, in which case I probably would have lost one of them. So that's the other dilemma you have when you start going beyond the council. But once again, I don't make a decision on that until we get into the search process. I always like very early on here to lay out all these things that could, you could run across during the search. So you've got time to think about it and ponder it. Any other questions?
I don't have any.
I don't have any, thank you.
Any questions out there for?
Yeah, anybody here? Mark, any questions?
No questions.
Well, my suggestion would be if you're on board with it, I would say, I would like to introduce Jeff Horn to you. I'm going to let him speak, tell you a little bit about himself. I've already told Jeff that, number one, if you want to do an interim, that's the first question, which I'm hearing that that's something I have an interest in. Number two would be to talk to Jeff and see if he might be a, you know, a potential person for that interim. If at the end of the evening you think, yeah, I would like to do that, Jeff is willing to step out of the room and we can go into closed session. Jeff, if we did that, do you want a closed session? Okay, so you have his authorization and his request for a closed session. So is that good enough for you, Mark, that you requested?
Let me, let me, let me go. I just, it's a new employee hire, possible closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 215I. I guess I'd just like Jeff to just get up and introduce himself first, you know? And then I'm going to ask him if we can go into closed session for this, so.
Yeah, I think that's what I would do. And then assuming Jeff again consents to the closed session, I can go into closed session where the council can have a discussion with Jeff about the position and his philosophy.
We'll hop out to the microphone then.
Hi, I'm Jeff Horn. I've been a city minister for 15 years. I've been in public service in Iowa for 20, so fair amount of experience. I'm a native of Iowa City, so I'm not too far from here.
So you're a Hawkeye fan?
I am. I'm a third-generation graduate. I have two sons that are now in school.
So you've got that red tie on.
Not always perfect in that sense, but yeah. So from Iowa City, worked in recently, not long ago in Bubay, and worked in this region. So I'm very familiar with it. My first job here was budget director in Johnson County. Did that since 0005. Worked in a few towns since then, bigger, different sizes. So that's kind of a nutshell of me. I have four kids. Two are in Iowa City in college, two are still, one goes to Kennedy and one goes to Franklin Middle School in Cedar Rapids. So this is a good location for me.
Any questions for that show? Any questions for?
For all kinds of them, but I'll wait for closed session.
So do I have a, Jeff, would you, if I want to talk to you a little bit more, would you like to go into closed session?
I would, sir.
Do I have a motion? Got a motion by Stephanie? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by John. Travis?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
All right, we'll be going into closed session.